I serve as President of the Chamber Board of Directors and I will be your moderator for tonight's forum. The Chanute Area Chamber of Commerce and Office of Tourism is pleased to present this candidate forum. We thank the candidates and the Chanute City Commission for being with us this evening, and we thank those in the audience for attending, and those watching at home on Channel 4 or 5, or via the ChanuteTV5.com website. All of the candidates were invited to participate in the forum this evening. Unfortunately, due to stomach flu, Tim Fairchild is not able to be with us. We are pleased that everyone else could join us. First, candidates drew for the seating arrangement. Commissioner Bertha, seated on the far side of the stage from the podium, will begin with a two-minute opening statement, and we will continue along the line until everyone has had a chance to provide his or her opening statement. Then candidates will be asked questions of a general interest to the city commission position. Each candidate will be given two minutes to answer each specific question. A forty-five and fifteen-second notification will be given to each candidate, and the candidates will be notified when their time has expired. Commissioner McCoy will answer the first question, and then the person seated to her left will speak next until all have had a chance to answer each of the questions. Questions were made available to the candidates yesterday. Questions were submitted by chamber members and the general public. Tonight's potential questions were developed by a nonpartisan committee made up of chamber volunteers and were reviewed prior to this evening to ensure a nonpartisan approach to the forum. This forum is where candidates will be able to answer specific questions. This is not a debate, and questions will not be taken from the floor. Following the questions, each candidate will have three minutes to provide a closing statement. We will begin at the opposite end of the tables for those statements. We are pleased to welcome the following candidates to tonight's forum. Kevin Bertha, Sam Budrow, Phil Cheney, Randy Gelmour, and Martha McCoy. We will now begin with Commissioner Bertha's opening statement.
Good evening, and thank you for the chance of being here tonight. My name is Kevin Von Bertha. I'm currently serving as a Chanute City Commissioner and a trustee at Neosho County Community College. I've also served one year as mayor while being a Chanute City Commissioner. I also serve on the board of the Chanute Community Theater here in Chanute. I grew up in Chanute on a family farm east of town. I went to Fairfield Grade School, Royston Junior High, and graduated from Chanute High School in 1981. In 1996, I graduated from Neosho County Community College. I married my high school sweetheart, Renee Rose Bertha, and we have lived in Chanute ever since. I'm a fifth generation to live in Neosho County in my family. My daughter makes six, and my grandson makes seven. I feel I have strong ties to this community, and the main reason I want to serve is to give back to my community. My goal is to see Chanute to be the best community that it can be. It will take positive and progressive attitudes to make this happen. I do not believe that turning back is the answer. I believe that we need to press forward. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Martha McCoy, and I am presently a city commissioner. I've enjoyed being a city commissioner for the last four years and feel like I have done a very good job. I like to listen to people and listen to what they tell me to think about or answer questions. I am also a Chanute native. I married to Jim Cornish. I have three children and two stepchildren. Together, we have ten grandchildren with two on the way. I attended Emporia State University, received my bachelor's degree there, and then I attended Pittsburgh State from my master's degree while working full-time. I have experienced divorce, being a single person raising three children, being unemployed, but also I have experienced the joy and support that has been given to me by my family and good friends. I believe that I am the best candidate because I have experienced so many hardships that many people in Chanute have or are experiencing right now. I'm hoping that you will vote for me in the coming election, April 7.
Good evening, I'm Randy Gelmour. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for inviting us here tonight and for putting on tonight's forum. I ask those of you attending or watching on television to listen closely to all the candidates this evening. This election possibly will decide a truly new course for our city, or leave it in the hands of those who have controlled it for the last four years. You will see a clear difference in the field this evening. You will have a tough decision to seek. I want to wish all the candidates here this evening the best of luck, and go Shockers.
Thank you. My name is Sam Budrow. I live at 211 South Sunset in Chanute. I'm a taxpayer just like the rest of you. I care about Chanute. My heart's with Chanute. My wife and I have made Chanute our home for the past twenty-one years. I'm a born Kansan, raised in Kansas, served the active duty in the United States Air Force and later on in the Kansas Air National Guard. I believe I bring a lot of things to the table as a potential candidate and commissioner to represent all of us with the knowledge that I have with forty years of public service. The city of Chanute is an extremely complex operation with us owning all of our utilities and the infrastructure that we have and all that the city of Chanute and citizens are compelled to deal with. We buy and sell power on a routine and regular basis. The complexity of that is such that not a lot of us know to what degree that we actually deal with that. We have gas storage cleared down into Oklahoma. We have an infrastructure that's aging. We have a lot of things that are on our plate that we need to take a look at and be partisan to because they're not going away. When you look at all the issues that the federal government has placed on our plate, the state of Kansas is dealing with at this point in time, all I can say is that we better be ready to deal with it. I'm offering you and pledging you my knowledge and my historical perspective of being with the city of Chanute, and I thank you for the opportunity and to the chamber as well for having this opportunity to address you tonight.
Thank you.
My name's Philip Cheney. I was born and raised in Chanute as well, went off to college and moved back. I am not your typical, you know, do anything, say anything, spend anything politician. I'm running to help the community and help raise the community, not to do it for the glory of the job. I'm not a commissioner so that I can sit around and tell you that I'm a commissioner, and I don't use this as a resume builder. I also have a plan and an agenda for this community. I want to make it better than how it is today. If someone tells you that they don't have a plan or an agenda, then I'm wondering why they're running. The decision really on this election is yours. Do you want four more years of the same that we've had, or do you want to move in a better direction? I'd like to start off with my opening statements just to cover some or clarify some stories, I guess, that are going around about my campaign. The first one is that Philip Cheney will not buy fire trucks. Just to explain this, I just want to get these out of the way early since they've been perpetuated by a few people on this stage. The current commission have spent $550,000 out of the reserve fund or the equipment reserve over the last two years. The current fund balance in the equipment reserve is $54,505. So it's not so much will I buy fire trucks in the future, it's will we have any money to buy fire trucks? How many fire trucks were purchased over those two years that we spent the $550,000? So I don't even have an option there to buy or not buy fire trucks because the money's already been spent by the current commission. The other one, Philip Cheney wants to sell the utilities. I don't want to sell the utilities. I want to fix the utilities. I've said this over and over and over, and some people that are running against me keep saying that I say opposite. I don't want to strap our utilities with $19 million worth of debt. I want to save them so that they can be a benefit to the community because if the fiber optic goes south, there will be no way that I can save the utilities. So the only way to save the utilities is not to burden them with debt. Also that I want to fire the current city manager and hire the old one back. I've never spoken to either one of the city managers, the former or the current city manager, so I have no way of knowing which one to hire or fire. I don't know either, any of them. And also that I want to cut the current benefits of the city employees if I'm elected. This might be the dumbest one of them all. I would think that most of you know me and know that I'm not a radical politician, and that I'm here to make things better. Thanks.
Thank you very much. The first question, beginning with Martha, is what is your vision of how best to utilize Chanute's fiber network for both businesses and residents?
Thank you. The best way that I believe to utilize Chanute's fiber network is this. First of all, we already have a good start to fiber. The network is already throughout the city. It will take time and it will take money to expand it farther. The city is already looking for funding and looking for funding resources to pay for the fiber expansion. We need to build it out as the revenue grows. There is no way we can pay for this all at once. The $19 million amount was starting a fiber network from ground zero. Chanute is not at ground zero. We have had fiber for years. We already have a great investment into the fiber system. Many Chanute businesses and schools are already benefiting from having the fiber system. And I believe in fiber, and I will strive to keep it going.
Thank you.
All right. I believe until we have a vote of the citizens concerning the expansion of our fiber optic network, we should continue in the same manner we have been. The service is available to businesses in town, new and old, and a selected few homes. We also need a profit and loss statement separate of the electric utility so we can have a better idea of what our true financial picture is concerning the fiber optic network, just like gas, water, sewer, and trash. When you lump everything together, it is impossible to get a clear financial picture of what our fiber network is doing. If a business wishes to locate in Chanute and make use of our services, they can be accommodated the same way we provide the service for Spirit. For now, I believe we should stay the course until we have reduced our indebtedness further unless voted on and approved by the voters. Once our bonds are reduced, we can expand our services with our own funds without mortgaging our electric and gas utilities for the next twenty years.
Thank you.
My position hasn't changed. I've continually said that I'm not in favor of spending $19 million for this project. I believe that there's better ways to do it. I've employed the staff to look at a systematic build-out, and by that what I mean is follow a comparison of what Google did in the Kansas City area. I think utilizing what's also called a COO system where we could get an early identification of a take rate, where we could start generating revenue and bringing it into the city to help offset those expenditures would be critical to a satisfactory implementation of this project. I also believe that I'd want to look at the debt service that exists right now. The city of Chanute has a $36 million bonded indebtedness. I want to see how that we could take a look at that debt service and reduce our debt service payments. I think we have to create an additional cash flow that would help with this process. I want to see a business model that's been revised since the last time that I saw it. By that I say, there's $500 and some thousand dollars in federal money that is supposed to be realized by the city of Chanute. I want to see the forty miles of fiber that was not part of the system and the business model to begin with. I want to see how that shakes out and helps us to reduce this cost factor. I want to see that cost factor go from $19 million down to a point that it is sustainable and where we don't have to impact our utilities in the manner that which we do not cause a situation where they are put in jeopardy. And the end result is, I think, we need to analyze this and take a real close look at it as we move forward.
Thank you.
I agree. I mean, as far as the way we're rolling out to businesses right now, I think we ought to continue on the same path. It's the residential side I think that I have the most questions about. I agree with Randy that I think there needs to be a vote of the people. I think we need to find a clear way that we're going to pay for it, because obviously even as recent as the newspapers the other day, it's the numbers are all jumbled up again. There should be no meter fees to people, and that we need the clear numbers. Because the other day stated in the paper was that we needed a 55 percent take rate. I asked at a recent roundtable what percentage we're basing that on if it's electric meters, so, and that's what they said that that's what they're basing it on, all electric meters in the entire city of Chanute, which would equate to about 2,500 customers, which this number's a little fictitious just because electric meters don't always equal customers. That doesn't mean that those are possible fiber customers. At the roundtable, when we had the discussion, we came up with it, we guessed there'd be about 2,400 potential customers in the city of Chanute. It was agreed upon by everybody there that that was probably a close number. So now at a 55 percent take rate, we need 2,500 of 2,400 people to take it, which is obviously more than 100 percent. Right now, AT&amp;T is installing fiber, U-verse, all over town. Cable One has doubled their nodes and offering 100 megabyte internet service over the next couple of months. The city recently, I saw a thing that the city was going to provide two gigabytes of internet service for the 2,500 customers that they're hoping to get. That's about 1.175 megabytes per person. Just to let you know, Cable One provides about three times that for less customers. So the trust, I guess, is where it comes to, is like, do you trust the numbers that are coming out? Most of them are confusing. The other day was stated that everybody needs to wire their house with Cat 6 cable in order to realize the speeds that the city's promising. Well, most people can't run a cable to their iPads. The problem is that we trust the experts to tell us that everything's great. Obviously, the experts are getting paid. Last year, CIGO alone was paid $265,000 to tell us how great fiber is and how good it'll do. That's what I get more of my questions from is how much more money will we have to pay if we do the project? That's why I want to see better numbers and also see what exactly, or how many people have to actually sign up. Thanks.
I guess my thoughts on fiber, Chanute fiber network are that from day one, I've always said that the system has to pay for itself. That's always been my take on this all along, and I've never wavered from that. Past documentational show that there's been times that I have voted against different motions during public city commission meetings in opposition of what was being voted on. They had to do with fiber. So contrary to some belief out in the community, I'm not a solid proponent of fiber. There's still questions in my mind. This is a work that's in progress. This is not something that's been set in stone. There's no clear date when it's going to happen. There's no clear amount on what it's going to cost yet. That's still being worked on. Business models are continuously being run. The recent one, actually two were just run this past week, and one of them had a 50 percent take rate and one had a 55 percent take. And at those rates, these business models would pay for themselves. As far as existing fiber, it's being utilized. It's being utilized in our educational system and our healthcare system and a lot of business and industry in town, plus private residencies. I believe that a build-out is needed, and it needs to be built out as the customers are willing to come onboard. I don't view this as a total build-out immediately all over Chanute. The meter charge has been removed from these business models that were just recently run. That's why this 50 to 55 percent take rate is there now instead of the original 35 percent. Again, I believe the fiber must pay for itself and support itself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your next question, beginning with Randy, is how do you intend to interact with citizens to ensure citizen input if you are elected or re-elected?
Well, I was a city commissioner before, so I primarily would do it the same way I did it in my last stint. There's rarely a week or hardly a day that I don't have somebody stop by my shop and want to discuss local city business. I've always had an open door policy to people, and I believe I heard an idea from Tim Fairchild once. He floated an idea where we might put together a monthly meeting and meet possibly on the third floor of the, in the Alliance Room, and have an informal meeting with two city commissioners and rotate it on a monthly basis and have invite citizens to come up, have coffee, sit around, and talk to us about what we can do to either help Chanute or help their particular situation, and try and open a dialogue and build trust between the citizens and the commission. That way, they're involved. The only way we're going to get further along is have involvement with all the citizenry, not just a select few.
Okay.
Well, I too agree in regard to an open access. I think that's critical. I think one thing that would be imperative is make sure that all the commissioners are clearly identified on the city's website just to start with, along with how to contact your city commissioner, because questions do come up and citizens do need to have, get answers to their questions. I believe city commissioners need to be active in the community. I don't think that you could, we can just be tied to our homes and our jobs and whatnot. I think we got to be actively involved with the Chamber of Commerce. I think we got to get out there and be amongst our citizens in order for those people to be able to have that one-on-one with us, to be able to talk to us and to be able to ask us questions and actually know us personally as best we can. I believe that there's other things that we should still instill and continue, the coffees that the chambers had where, quarterly basis, where the public has been invited to come in and ask their commissioners questions and try to get answers. And then last but not least, I mean, I'm setting up a personal telephone and text and wherever that if I am elected, you will have access to me. But the end result is, call me. That's the most up-close and personal guarantee that I can give you, because if you got a question, then the best way to do is call me. But if you can't call me, email, if you can't text me somehow, some way, we need to make contact with each other.
I'd agree with Randy that, just like last time, I'm going to do it the same way. I'm going to listen to all the people in town, not just a select few, and I'm going to listen to all of their concerns. I think last time I got an abundance of information, and many people contacted me because they trust me and they know that what I'll do is I'll take care of their situation rather than looking the other way. More I want to talk about the interacting with the people to address their specific concerns. As far as listening to the people, you have people that are running right now that passed a franchise fee that obviously wasn't real well-received by the people. There was a meter fee built into the fiber optic budget that wasn't well-received, and now it's been taken back out. So I guess that's why I question, like, how much can you listen to the people and still pass things like a franchise fee that has to be taken back off? Or a meter fee? You seek money and everything on certain budget numbers and then take the meter fee back off, and we're still seeking those $19 million even though we don't know how we're even going to pay for it at this point. I think that we need to be careful whenever we do certain things like that. We need to listen to the people rather than spouting out things that 5 percent is no big deal, or it's only so much money so it shouldn't hurt people when they want to pay extra on their utility bills. Because we need to think of everybody, not just our own personal income or our own personal situation. We need to think of, you know, single moms or people on fixed income and stuff like that. Those monies are theirs, and those are monies that help them pay the bills. And I think those are the people that you need to listen to, and you got to keep in mind, rather than only keeping in mind yourself or your select few friends that don't have a problem with paying an extra 5 percent on their utility bill. I think what I'll do is the same as before, is I'll listen to everybody. I'll get to their situation and I'll address it the same way that I always have. There was a lot of situations that weren't super popular whenever I was on the council last time, but I'm still going to address them. If a citizen has a concern, I'll respond appropriately and I'll definitely try to take care of their issue. Thanks.
Well, being on the Chanute City Commission, one of the things that we felt like, or I felt like was important was interaction with the community. So one of the objectives was to establish the coffee with the commissioners, which happens four times a year. Jane Brody and I worked on that to get that established, and the chamber took over and has been running it since, so I feel like that is a step in the right direction. I also have my phone number published, my email address is published, so I feel like that I have put the information out there for people to contact me whenever they feel like they need to. I think there's been some valuable conversations at the coffees, and it's allowed a lot of citizens to interact in a non-formal basis with the city commissioners. I think there's been a lot of good feedback, a lot of good information exchanged at these I also like to say that this past commission does listen to what the constituents have to say, because the meter fee has been removed, and that was something the constituents didn't feel comfortable about, so it was removed. I'd also like to say that the franchise fee was instituted by the city commission in an effort to raise funds. There was a petition, and the petition was valid, and was brought to the city commission. The city commission accepted that petition. And the city commission also felt like that it was in the best interest of the public to allow the public to vote, to allow the majority to express their opinion, not a minority, which signed the petition. So that's what happened in that situation, and the people were given the opportunity for their voices to be expressed, whether they were in favor of it or opposed of it. So I guess my point is that there is interaction, there is communication, and I believe that will continue to happen if I am elected as a city commissioner. Thank you.
On this subject, I feel that I already interact with citizens, and I have for the last four years that I've been in office. I answer and return phone calls, and emails, and texts, and the people that come into my store. There's been several people come in and we've gone out on the back porch and talked, or gone into my office and talked. So they know where to find me. The problems and the comments that they ask, I listen and I answer their questions. If I don't immediately know the answer, I find out the answer as soon as possible, and then I contact them. I'm available every day for any citizen to contact me and ask a question.
Thank you very much. The next question, beginning with Sam, is the water supply has been a discussion item for a number of years. What is your suggested solution to the city's future water requirements?
Thank you. Well, this has been a topic that's been researched and looked at for many years, but ultimately the end result is when drought situations and the lack of water dissipates and we have plenty of water, then it goes back and it goes to the wayside. The city of Chanute just completed a water master plan with basically four areas identified as possible emergency water supply areas. One of which I think is the most cost-effective is the Santa Fe Lake, which has approximately 81 million gallons of water in it at this time. The problem that deals with that option is the fact that we have to get a piping from the Santa Fe Lake to our treatment facility. The cost of that is, of the four options, is approximately 900 and some thousand dollars. I am not totally satisfied and sold on that concept yet because I believe that there's still additional research that needs to be done. A couple of other options have come to my attention that are separate of what's in the master plan. There are, our water intake at the river has approximately, I think, two large 16-inch lines that run from the intake to our water treatment facility. If there is some area out there in that immediate deal where there is water catching bases that possibly could be looked at, KDHE would have to be looked at. There's no price has been put to those figures that. There's another scenario that we've got to contend with. In the amount of an emergency situation with a contamination of the river, you know, supply is not the immediate deal because our water intake could be contaminated. So how are we going to even get to the Santa Fe Lake? I think we need to get the cost of an emergency above-ground supply system, look at that. I want to address this. I want to move forward. We can't let this thing sit up for another 50 years.
Thanks. Yeah, I totally agree with Sam. I think it's been talked and talked and talked about for years. We've paid for study after study after study, and the engineers give us little bits of information, and yet we still are where we are today. Nothing being done. We keep paying the consultants over and over and over to keep studying our same problems, and yet we never act on them. We jumped on $19 million for a fiber to the home, but yet our water supply has taken a back burner. We've paid last year, as I mentioned before, we've paid CIGO $265,000 to look into fiber. I'm not sure how much we paid to look into our water supply solution so that we can move forward on that. I guess that's what my main question is, or where are our priorities today? Do we understand what we're actually facing? Similar studies, such as an INI study that was done a few years ago, we spent a massive amount of money so that they paid a company to come in town so they can smoke the pipes and everything and find all the, where the water was coming from, the inflow and infiltration study. I was notified online that there was a leak on one of my sewer pipes, and I got a certified letter from the city that said I had 30 days to comply or that they would fix it and charge me for it. I think that was about two and a half years ago now, and I still haven't heard a word about anything. So I think we don't follow through whenever we keep paying these consultants over and over and over, and we never do anything about it. I mean, I think we need to get our priorities straight. I think we need to understand that water's a little more important to this community than fiber optic. I mean, we don't have any of the numbers. We don't know if fiber's going to pay for itself. We don't know what we're going to charge, and we don't know what the take rate is, but we're already out looking for $19 million. We know that we're going to have a shortage of water at some point because the river's has went down many a times. We have the fear that it's going to be contaminated, that we're going to need water, but yet we're just going to pay another consultant to look into it for us again so we can put another book on the shelf, so we can say that we've looked into it. I think we need to finally address the issue. We need to move forward with the plan and pick something and go with it and actually help the community. Thanks.
Thank you.
I think it was rather interesting that yesterday in the Chanute Tribune, it runs a little article in there, and that under 25 years ago today...
a little article in there, and that under 25 years ago today, the topic of the city commission was water reserves and where we're at. This conversation's been going on for over 90 years now. It originally started out with Santa Fe Lake and that area. The city purchased that land and that land and that lake, its intention at that time was to create a water reserve for the city. So yes, the city has dropped the ball. It's been dropping the ball on this issue for over 90 years now. From the documents that I've seen, the information that's been presented to the city commission since I've been here, in my opinion, Santa Fe Lake is the, would be the most logical source right now for emergency water reserve. The costs that are associated with it are the most minimal. It supplies us with immediate supply of water that we'll be able to access. I think that the situation with the river is, has a very big impact on our future because contamination in my mind, in my opinion, is probably the greatest obstacle that could cause us to lose our water. And when that situation happens, of course, everybody goes into panic mode and they start storing water and filling their bathtubs and, and at that point, we've gone from several million gallons of water down to a two-day supply and then it's gone. So I think this is a real issue that needs to be addressed and I would like to be part of the commission that actually does do something about it. Thank you.
We all take our water for granted. We want good, clean water to come out of the tap when we turn on the faucets. We are dependent on the Neosha River as our water source. If something does go wrong with it, we must have a backup source. I agree that it has taken too long to be able to find one. One suggestion could be that maybe we could work hand-in-hand with Ash Grove to hold back a portion of one of their quarries. This could be used if we have a drought. The other option has already been stated is Santa Fe Lake. Santa Fe Lake has a lot of silt on the bottom and runoff from the old wax plant. The city would need to look for grants to dredge the lake and also ways to take the contaminants out of it. If we decide to use it as a backup water source, I am concerned that there won't be enough water for the city. We are already in a drought right now. This cannot be put on the back burner. The time to start this is now.
I'm going to need to get a little more information concerning this issue. I know that we have raised water issues and I haven't heard or seen a lot of discussion on the water resources for a while, since the drought a couple of years ago. I believe that former mayor Ed Cox had some ideas on that issue in the past and has worked hard on it. I would probably get with him and see what research he has done on the subject. I'm sure it would be a very good idea to have either a backup or a main water source other than in the Neosha River. But before I can make any decisions on that, I'd have to hear a lot more. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Thanks.
The next question, beginning with Phil. As you know, the city's borders are uneven. This can create numerous dilemmas. What is your position on annexation?
I'm not for forced annexation. I don't think that's the way that we want to go and I think it could be a little simpler. I think we need to cut taxes. I mean, I think I've spoke about that numerous times. I think that if we're wanting people to entice them to join the city, I think we need to make it easier on them as far as lower taxes. There's three people running that when afforded the opportunity to cut taxes, did cut taxes and other ones that did not. I think offering lower utilities in the city than outside the city, like we currently do on electric, is a way to go. I think we need to grow the community but make it a gain for both us and them. I think right now we don't have any sort of a benefit for them because we've allowed them to get city utilities without annexation. We've allowed, past commissions have dropped the ball on that. They've allowed people to get city utilities without annexing in. So that's what helps with the South Santa Fe. Obviously, being on the planning commission for a number of years, we've seen how bad this is for the fire, or for the police to know which house is in town, which one's out of town, if it's a sheriff or a police response or city police response, I think causes confusion for everybody. And I think that's a big benefit to people that live just right outside the city. They can enjoy, you know, 40-some mils less on their tax roll, but yet they get police and fire protection and pretty much all the amenities of the city, especially, like, some enjoy the paved roads and everything. But I think the problem is that our property tax per house, median property tax on a house in the city shoots $1,363. I mean, why would somebody want to come into the city if they're going to join a city that spins, spins, spins and never cuts any taxes? I mean, there's no enticement whatsoever for to bring them in. I do agree that squaring up the boundaries would be great, but I don't think that we should be the ones that go out and tell the people that they have to annex in just because. I think we need to work with the people in the rural areas and I think we need to find ways that we can entice them in. And I think one of the most enticing and the main complaint that I always heard through the years was that they don't want to pay extra taxes. So I think we need to make it a little more beneficial for them and I think through cutting spending or at least proposing a, finally a balanced budget after all these years, that we could at least entice them in with lower taxes. Thanks.
Four years ago, at this same candidate forum on this very stage, this question was asked then and my response at that time was I do not believe in forced annexation into our city limits. I believe it was voluntary only. And that's something that I've stood by my four years as a city commissioner and I will continue to stand by as, if I'm re-elected as a city commissioner, because I believe that property owners have rights and they are the determining factor as to whether they annex into the city. Do not believe that the city should have the ability or be given the ability to force someone into the city limits. Thank you.
It's true, the city borders are very uneven. It would make better sense to even out all the borders. I believe that the city should devise a proper way to change the borders and have the citizens vote in the next scheduled election. But you know, this might be a mute point. Currently, in the Kansas House, there is a bill on annexation. This bill states that the county commissioners would be approving unilateral annexations by cities. I am against this bill because it would hinder our city to grow. We should be at liberty to make our own decisions on what is good for the city. Annexing property will be expensive for the city in running more infrastructure to these properties. The people this affects needs to be responsible to help for the services too. But if you want to contact your representative or senator, this is called House Bill 2003 and I would say ask them to vote against it. Thank you.
Forced annexation, in my book, is not an option. We have to entice landowners into the city limits by showing them benefits for being annexed in. Right now, a great many of them don't want to pay the additional taxes for entering the city limits because there are no great benefits for them at this time. I, for one, have no intention to force anyone into Shenute that does not want to be here voluntarily. We need a clear message with cost benefits for them to see why moving into the city would be a good thing for them, like having cheaper utilities and lower taxes like we once had in the past.
Thank you. Well, I've heard a lot of the same comments and I agree with a majority of it. There is some areas to this question, though, that does need to be addressed because there are citizens that live within, inside the city limits that have also said to me that if I vote for you, I want you to square up these boundaries because they feel that it's not fair that they're paying the taxes and the things and where others are receiving the services that are outside of the city limits and they're getting the same benefits. Public safety is dealing with an atrocity in regard to trying to figure out who's in and outside of the city limits. I think the legislature is about ready to throw another iron in the fire, you know, and cause additional confusion to this matter. I think we need to get actively involved with our planning commission to further investigate this further, but ultimately, while we're looking at all of it, there is nothing wrong with looking at voluntary annexation and working with citizens that do want to come inside the city limits. And I already am aware of several that have already told me that that's what they want to do and it's not a complex deal if they, if we can actively work with them. So my position is we've got to get, we've got to get more proactive, we've got to get involved and we've got to take action to actually do things to help our tax base increase and to bring others within this community.
Beginning with Kevin. Do you believe citizens should be allowed to vote on city-generated bonds? If so, what is the dollar threshold for having bond issues placed on the ballot?
I think an interesting aspect on city-generated bonds is the fact that part of the process of issuing bonds is there's a, what they call a public hearing, which each city commission has when the bonds are being presented. And during this public hearing, the public, the constituents, the voters, the citizens of Shenute and those outside the city of Shenute have an opportunity to address the bond issue, to address the city commission and discuss this and present their opinion, their emotions, their feelings about the bond. It's very, very poorly attended. I don't, I couldn't even begin to think of the numbers of people that have spoken because I don't think I've ever seen anybody speak at one of these public hearings when it's addressing bonds. That's part of the mechanism that's already there that people can get involved with and interact and have an opinion and express their voice during this process. As far as allowing the citizens to vote on bond issues, I don't have any issue with that myself. I mean, I feel like if that's what the citizens would desire and that's what they want to do, then they should be given that opportunity. As far as the dollar amount, I couldn't say. You know, I really don't know. I think that would maybe be something that the citizens of Shenute would need to decide. I do want to make one point and that is that as elected officials, I believe that there is trust put in us to help make some of these decisions. But in the end, it's the citizens that have the final vote and the final say. Thank you.
First of all, we in Shenute have a representative form of government. The citizens vote for the commissioners that they want to represent their voice. If we would have to wait until the next scheduled election to vote on a bond, it would hinder the speed and progress of our city. Let me give you an example. We must do renovation of our city water treatment plant. We would have to wait until the next election to vote on a bond. If this were to put to a vote and the citizens voted it down, what would happen then when the EPA would shut the city water plant down? Because there's a lot of different people that are involved in all the utilities we have here. There are many issues that must be decided quickly to keep the city running, the schools, the quality of life issues. Requiring a sales tax hike should be brought to a citizen vote. That I do agree with. But anything about, to do, anything that has anything to do with utilities and getting money such as a bond should not be voted on because of all of the regulatory issues that are involved.
Well, I absolutely believe they should get the vote. If we can't do a reasonable job of conveying what our visions are, then the people won't vote for them. It is our duty to keep people educated and involved. I know many citizens feel that they have no voice in many of these matters in which they could participate but aren't allowed to. This is one way to gather citizen involvement. I think on bonds, once you cross a million-dollar mark, you need to start considering letting the people vote on them. That is one of the ways we keep everyone involved and let them be a part of the process. City commissioners do not need to be the end-all and be-all in all these large-scale decisions. I realize we are elected to resolve many issues, but that does not mean the citizenry shouldn't be involved when they are the ones destined to pay for our bright ideas.
Thank you. Well, a threshold to me really isn't a critical issue to me in regard to a dollar amount because I believe in regard to general obligation bonds and any bond of that nature where we are putting a true faith gesture forward as a community where we're obligating ourselves has to go to a vote of the people. I'm totally 100% without any doubt that has to happen. Utility revenue bonds are a little bit different in nature by statute. They are designed and set up that a vote is not required. I'm not opposed to a vote, but the end result is, is that if you set the threshold at $5 million or $2 million or whatever the case may be, I think it all comes down to a trust issue because why if the commission didn't want to put it to a vote in regard to a bond because we've set a threshold of $2 million on a bond that a city couldn't, commission couldn't just raise their budget? We had a $51 million budget last year. Why not just make that budget $53 million? There's no vote there. The commissioners are elected to vote on that budget. You don't even have a bond issue at hand. So it's coming down to a trust issue and who you want to make those decisions on our behalf. But I'm not opposed to a bond issue being voted on if that's the case, but I just want to let you realize that there's other situations that this community has realized over the years, that this community elected commissioners to make those hard decisions than they did. And my fellow candidates here, some of them even agreed with me last time in regard to our power plants and our utilities. Those commissioners voted on those and we all are thankful to this day that they did that for us. Look at what they've did for us. It's been a godsend. So I think it's a trust matter. I think it's who you want representing you and who you feel comfortable to make those decisions on your behalf.
Yeah, and I agree. I think that a vote of the people on over a certain dollar, I don't know what exactly that dollar amount would be. I'd have to study that a lot harder, but I think certain things like whenever we voted on the pool whenever I was on the council last time and stuff, I think that's what got a lot more buy-in. I think people understand it more and they feel like they had a voice in the situation. They could choose what they wanted. We divided the sales tax into two parts. One part went straight to the pool with the sundown on it. The other part would just gone into the general fund. The people felt like they had a choice and they chose, they only wanted a pool. They didn't want money just to go in, just to be spent however the elected officials wanted. And I believe that the government needs to try to bring more people in like that. I understand that we're not a full democracy and we are a representative republic and that you do elect people to represent you, but in a small community like this, I guess it has brought it to the forefront, the fact that three people could put us $20 million in debt on the backs of our electric and gas utility. And I think people finally realize that there is a fault there, that they could strap us with that debt and take down our electric and gas utility. I mean, I think that's scared people into thinking that they do want a little more of a voice in things because when you're electing those people, it's hard to think that they're just going to go off and spend $19 million when it's been agreed upon by certain people other that they don't have the real numbers and stuff and we're still going after $19 million. So I think that there is a trust issue and I think right now there's not a lot of trust. And I think it's been disproved, I mean, say that the franchise fee was by a minority, well, it was a majority because it was voted out. So therefore that the people felt like they had to bring their voice and somebody had to pass a petition in order to get that voice because obviously if they brought it up, people wouldn't have wanted it. The meter fees was the same way. It's funny that it was never brought up or never discussed and I did ask questions at a bond hearing, never got one response of anything that I'd asked, some funny answers that they posted online, just, you know, trying to be silly, I guess. But whenever I spoke on that, on the meter fees, then all of a sudden, the next meeting, it was taken off. So I don't understand how, you know, we're listening to the people and everything and know how they're wanting it and then these things get taken off so easily. Thanks.
Beginning with Martha. Agreeing that job availability and affordable housing are important to Shenute. What would you do as a city commissioner to improve both?
Job availability will improve with bringing in more businesses that hire more workers. Most employees need to be trained. NCCC already offers a lot of classes and helps with training people for different jobs. CRDA is working constantly to bring in more businesses, to also bring in more jobs. Affordable housing is a problem every day. There are many houses here that are occupied and are falling down. The owners should be responsible to either repair them or tear them down. This would at least give some space that maybe they could build another home on that property. There is assistance available for that, such as the Neighborhood Revitalization Grant. This is also why we have a city inspector to work on this problem and try to improve the housing here. We do have a problem and I would like to address that in the future.
Well, the number one issue I think on both is keeping the cost of living here in Shenute, owning a home or operating a business lower. We own our own utilities. Let's make them the cheapest in the state. Why do we continue to offer competitive rates when we own it ourselves? If we're all part owners, we should not all see, we should all see the benefits of being an owner. I have never heard of a single
I have never heard of a single business or person to buy anything to use so they can get its products or services at a competitive price. They own it to save money, period. That is how we bring business and people to town. Make our town the most economical place to live and operate. Excuse me.
Job availability and affordable housing, I also concur. They go hand in hand. But I think we've got to look at our vision and where we're headed. The days of bringing in large corporations with multiple jobs are getting farther and fewer between. I think we've got to get behind the CRDA. I think we need to get together and have a viable portfolio that's available to them. I think we've got to get out, and I got, we've got to get amongst those businesses. There are summits and conferences that are being held across this country, and those people are being brought there and enticed to come and be talked to by various companies, cities, et cetera, that are, and owners that are trying to bring those businesses to their communities. Unless we actually get out and get amongst them in this arena, we're not going to have a chance. I think the ultimate result is, in regard to being able to have upward mobility and flexibility in regard to the housing, we've got to also work within the community to give other opportunities for people to better themselves in regard to moving from one house to another, which is then going to open up other houses within this community. I really think it'd be awesome that if we could put together some type of an incentive program where if we had every business in this community had one job, just one job, what would we do to the impact to this community? I think this commission needs to get more business-friendly. I don't want to see businesses afraid to approach the city commission. I want them to be welcomed by the city commission. And if I'm elected as a city commissioner, one of your city commissioners, that's my promise.
Thanks. Yeah, I agree with Sam. That's part of it. We've been discussing for years, if, what is the way that we can get every business or industry in town to hire one more person? And I don't, I guess I disagree on the part that we need to spend more government money to get it done. I agree more with Randy on that we need to cut taxes and lower utilities. I think that's the only way you're going to attack the problem because like Sam said, the bringing, us waiting for Boeing to land here and plop in 300 or 400 jobs just is a crazy thought. I mean, it'd be great if they did, but it's not going to happen. We need to encourage growth from inside of our community. Most all of our large employers right now, we're all homegrown. None of those were brought in. So I think what we need to do is nurture the ones that are here right now. And what they're wanting are lower taxes and lower utilities. They don't want us to spend more and more money on more and more consultants and everything to come in and tell us what's wrong. I mean, they're telling us what's wrong. I heard it all the time when the four years I was on there. A month ago when we were up here, I was talking about the 32 jobs that we'd lost right before that. Well, it ended up as 82 jobs by the end of the week. There's certain things that I think we need to focus more on rather than worrying about thinking that fiber to the home is going to solve every problem and it's going to bring everybody to Chanute to set up jobs. It's this pot of gold that we're all looking for, and it's just not there. As far as like on the housing, the average home costs in the state of Kansas is $130,000, in Chanute it's $66,000. Household income in the state of Kansas averages at $50,200, in Chanute it's $36,000. So we do need more and better jobs. We do, on our housing and stuff, we need more affordable housing. However, the only solution we've came up with is to build another housing, or build a housing addition. And thank God for Darren Lubringer, that thing would probably be a desert out there right now. I don't think that's what's solving the problems. I think what we need to do is focus on the jobs, focus on the businesses and industry in town to hire more people, and as they hire more people with the jobs, the housing will follow. People will start buying houses and stuff. Right now, we don't have a lot of, a lot, a lot of our community right now are rental houses and stuff. People don't have that vested interest in our community, and I think we just need to help the businesses in our community that are already here. Thanks.
Currently, we live in a global economy, a global community. The environment that we currently live in and operate in is influenced by outside forces. There's a lot of competition for business and industry all over the world, all over the United States and all over Kansas. Anytime someone, a business or potential business goes to the Chamber, State Chamber of Commerce, information sit out to several cities and communities across Kansas, giving them a heads-up and an opportunity to bid these packages or to try to influence these businesses to come in. It's very competitive, and it's very hard to influence someone, to bring them into your community. So the point should be, it can happen, but we need to, we need to focus on the industry that we have. And I think that we've done that in the past four years. We've issued IRBs, which are industrial revenue bonds, to help fund expansion by local homegrown businesses. We've negotiated with our largest electrical consumer, which is Ash Grove Industries, a new contract that will guarantee that the Chanute reaps back the money that's invested to help pay off the bonds that were issued for that investment. Over the past four years, the CRDA, CRDA has been funded. The Neighborhood Revitalization Plan has come to fruitation in the city and the county both. So this commission has done what it can do to help create, to help bring jobs into our community. If I want to clarify one thing, we haven't helped create jobs because that's not the city's responsibility. The city's responsibility is to create an environment where other people want to come in and expand and create jobs. So thank you.
Your last question of the evening, beginning with Randy. How important do you feel it is for the city to support quality-of-life organizations? And how would you suggest funding them in the future?
Without being more specific on the quality-of-life organizations you're talking about, I don't know exactly how to answer that question. There are some that have been on the public dole for years, even after it was agreed in the beginning that the funds would be only used for a short period of time until they got on their feet. Many of these quality-of-life issues, I think, need to be funded by the rank-and-file members and supporters of these organizations. If they aren't willing to use their own funds, why should the average citizen of Chanute, who may never use any of their services, have to pay for them? It isn't government's duty to take another person's money and donate it for charitable purposes, as we've done in the past. Let the people keep their money and decide who they want to donate to. If you're speaking about organizations like the Safari Museum, I would definitely want to continue to help them. I know that management of the type that Conrad Frehley offers, we definitely get the most bang for our buck. Those type of operations, I want to continue to help and see them flourish.
Well, I too agree. I'm a little confused in regard to quality-of-life organizations, so I'm going to try to address it from three different aspects. Quality-of-life organizations, quality-of-life services, and quality-of-life issues, right? I think, not knowing exactly what that all entails, I think each one of those scenarios is going to have to be looked at on a case-by-case basis, and we're going to have to identify, identify the actual revenue that we have available to us as a city commission and as a, as a community. I think when you look at the core of what makes up Chanute, quality-of-life and quality-of-life organizations all attribute to what makes Chanute, it has been and will continue to be. Not all of these issues can be funded to its fullest extent without knowing exactly what they are, but I think that's where a priority and setting out a high, medium-priority funding mechanism to determine what actually should take place with those organizations or issues needs to be reviewed and weighed out heavily by the city commission. All in all, what we are is who we are, and those all attribute to the city of Chanute.
I agree that, I mean, they definitely need looked at. I think there, I took it the quality-of-life organizations in two kind of parts, well, probably three. But as far as like the museum, the art gallery, and stuff like that, I think they need to be, continue to be funded. I think we need to hold them accountable for the money that does come so that they are. I know we had a lot of issues with what hours they're open and all that kind of stuff, with the art gallery and stuff. But I think we need to focus on that, just to see where the money's going, and are we getting the best bang for our buck? The other one, such as, like, you know, other monies that are going out to the Chamber, Main Street, CRDA, I think there's some room that we can consolidate some resources so that we're not funding three different offices, so we're not paying three utility bills and everything else. I know the Chamber owns their own building, but we're leasing on the other two. I think there's some way that we can move those together a little bit more so that we can share resources, so it's not such a burden on the city. And then also holding those certain organizations responsible as far as like their membership and stuff. I don't think that they're, we ought to be giving more money than their membership does. So I think there ought to be some sort of a match so that entice them to go out and get more people onto their organization so that they can help it. The other side would be like the food pantry in the Faith House and stuff like that. I think these are huge benefits to our community, but it's something that we should strive to move off of. I think we need to try to empower people so that they don't need to use these facilities and stuff, so that they can be on their own. When the current commission spends $29,000 to a motive group in Tennessee to tell us that fiber's great, there's 29,000 that could have helped these people, that we could have taken off the taxes. When the current commission spends $5,000 a month on a marketing firm out of Kansas City to set up a website and a Facebook page to tell us to be positive, more wasted money. When the current commission adds 5% to the utility bills for their spending habits, this is more money that's taken out of the people's pocket, the people that may not have to use these facilities if they had more money. An extra $45,000 for a city manager that only made it six months, there's more money that's out. I think that if we reduce the waste and reduce the taxes and reduce the utilities, these people won't need these organizations as much, and they won't be, won't have to be funded by the city as much. Thanks.
I guess when I think of the quality-of-life organizations in Chanute, I think of Main Street. I think of Chamber of Commerce, the Safari Museum, and the Chanute Art Gallery, because these are the organizations that are funded through the city commission budget, through the citizens of Chanute. I also think about the swimming pool, the golf course, the Memorial Auditorium, which we're at tonight. I also think about Chanute Community Theater and the Chanute Public Library. These are all organizations that contribute to the quality of life of the citizens of Chanute. I believe that we need to support the quality-of-life organizations that we currently are funding. And that's something that we have looked at every year since I've been on the commission, and we've had extended debates about funding these different entities and what that amount should be. And we've cut their budgets in the past, and we've given them the expectations that we have that they need to fundraise, they need to support themselves, become more self-sufficient, We have a Chanute Community Theater that's a 501(c)(3) that does not receive any funding from the city of Chanute. It's all donations. We have small clubs and small organizations that, some of them aren't even 501(c)(3)'s, that people volunteer and contribute their own personal funds to, to keep them active and keep them blessing the city of Chanute and its citizens. There's a lot, I guess my point is, there's a lot of people that are involved in quality-of-life in Chanute from all different aspects, from all different backgrounds, all different financial commitments, and that's what makes the quality-of-life organizations in Chanute a very strong part of our community, and something that I really feel strongly about. Thank you.
Supporting the quality-of-life organization is the lifeblood of our city. We must provide citizens who live here and people who will move here an excellent quality of life. They need places to go and things to do. There are many things to do in Chanute. Some examples of quality-of-life organizations here are the parks, the recreation center, the senior center, the fire escape, Chanute Community Theater, Chanute Entertainment Series, and the library. Other organizations such as maybe museums and art galleries exist on their membership, but sometimes they need a little extra help. One of the many missions of the organizations such as Main Street and the Chamber of Commerce are here to provide more activities for the quality of life of the citizens, and this is why I support them. We must have a good quality of life here for all ages. I believe Chanute currently has this, but I always like to see even more.
Thank you very much. This concludes our question portion of the evening, and we now move into the closing statements. You have three minutes, beginning with Phil.
Thanks. My major goal of this is to bring transparency and fiscal conservative back to government. There's three people running this year that have cut taxes when afforded the opportunity, and three that have not, even with extra monies coming into the coffers. I want to cut spending, cut taxes, and make this community grow again. I know you've been told that this community is growing. However, we do have 100 less water meters than we did four years ago. How many of those equate to homes, and how many people have we lost? I'm sure that I could ask, you can ask around and find out that we are not growing right now. So I guess it goes down to the question, the same as I quoted Reagan last time, are you better off now than you were four years ago? The electric utility is losing money. Lost over $650,000 in two years. $1.4 million over budget in production contractual services. $650,000 transferred into cap one two years ago, zero last year. General fund transfers, $300,000 below budget. $45,000 short on the equipment reserves. Gas utility lost $875,000 in 2013. We gained back 90 last year, so good job. $113,000 short in the equipment reserve. Cash on hand dropped $783,000 in two years. The sewer utility has lost $57,000 last year. The equipment reserve lost $550,000 in the last two years. Now it only has $54,000 in the bank. General fund lost $32,000. Randy and I voted four years, or didn't sign a budget four years ago because the general fund was going to go over $5 million. Today, it sets at $7 million. The electric shorted the general fund $143,000 in general fund transfers. Last year, the revenue budget was 6.72 million, the expense budget was 7.033 million. It was budgeted at a loss of $300,000. We are currently living on a commission that budgets losses in the general fund. They're planning on losing money by the end of the year that they've budgeted. I will not spend out of the reserve to meet budget. I think we made it clear four years ago, or the eight, or the four years that I was on there, starting eight years ago, that I didn't, wasn't going to spend out of reserve fund. We were actually putting money into the reserve fund. The electric fund was making its full transfers. Yet we've gotten so far away from that now that now we're just losing money left and right, and now we're going to go after another 19 million and start another utility to try to regain some of that lost money. I think there's going, going to be a close election, and I encourage everyone to vote. But I think you've got to think very hard on which direction do you want to go? Do you want to stay on the current path of losing $6 million over the last four years out of our unencumbered cash? Or do you want to get back to fiscal responsibility and transparency in government so that people know what's going on? All right, so I ask you again, are you better off now than you were four years ago? Thanks.
Thank you.
Ultimately, the decision's going to be you, the taxpayer. I offer you just a few things. And I was gone for the last few days, but I was able to attend the city commission meeting the other night, and the audit report that I heard was not quite exactly the same that I just now heard. I heard a general fund that had more money carried over than what I really had anticipated. I was pleased to hear that there was additional, approximately 200,000, that was now available in the cash carryover for the general fund. I also heard and was pleased to hear the amount of debt service that had been paid down by the city over the last four years, and that is a huge accomplishment in regard to, we went from 40-some million in bonded indebtedness to 30-some million now. Those are, those are positive accomplishments. I think that the end result is where I'm at is, I have stayed the course in regard to saying that I want a positive change, and I still stand by that. I want positive growth, and I want positive thinking, and that's, that's what I want to bring to, to the commission if, if I'm elected to be your city commissioner. The other side of this that I really want you to think about is where we want to be in the next four years, and I don't want to see us at status quo. I don't want us to spend beyond our ability. I want a revenue-based budget. I want us to look at all of the issues and judge them accordingly. I don't want to take them and be haphazard about it in any way, shape, or form. I am my own person. I have my own mind, and I will make my own decisions. There may be a dissension in regard to the votes that we would take as a city commission, but that's good. That's honest debate. That's what this is all about, because if we don't have that, if we just have a rubber-stamped approach, we are not going to achieve what we need to achieve. The federal government, the state of Kansas, if you've been reading and listening to the media, what we got coming out, the perfect storm is just around the corner for us, folks. And if we're not ready to do this, and if we don't have a plan, and I mean a serious plan, then we are going to be the ones held accountable, because ultimately, where does this go? The buck stops here. Some of you may have been familiar with a movie called The Replacements starring Gene Hackman and Keanu Reeves. The coaches at halftime was approached by the media and stuck a microphone in his face and said, "Coach, how are we going to get back in this game?" He said, "Hard." He said, "Heart. We're going to take miles and miles of heart." I don't have much to give you, but I got my heart and I got the fact that I care about Chanute and I care about this community. And if you elect me to be your city commissioner, that is where I'm at with you.
One thing I want to address that Sam just stated, when it came to the bonded indebtedness, I'm sorry, and the reductions over the last four years, a lot of that was primarily because of the actions taken by Phil and myself and the commission at that time, how we structured the bonded indebtedness and reduced the numbers as stated by Neil Phillips at that audit on Monday night. My goals tonight were to convey to the voters that in this year's election, more than any other time that I can recall, we have a clear distinction between two leadership styles. In one camp if you choose, you can reelect the current leaders and continue on the same path we have had for the last four years. We will in all likelihood press ahead and spend $19 million to expand the fiber optic network. I truly believe the people of Chanute should have a chance to vote on this issue, but likely won't. In the other camp, three people who have also served, but seek a more methodical approach to running our city, who would let the people vote when spending millions of their hard-earned dollars. I fought long and hard before accepting the challenge of running for the city commission again. Quite honestly, had we not had such a formal group that agreed to join in, I most likely would have passed on the opportunity. But I truly feel if I'm elected along with the former commissioners, Tim Fairchild and Phil Cheney, we can accomplish many good things. All the candidates on this stage have a record of service in our town. All I can ask is for you to, you the voters, to take the time and review the, our past actions and make your choices accordingly. Remember to vote on April 7th and God bless y'all.
I am your voice for common sense. I advocate for existing and potential Chanute businesses. I am committed to the renovation of South Plummer Road. We have many lives at stake on that road. And I want to work to ensure safety by maintaining an excellent police and fire protection here in Chanute. If I am voted to represent you in the coming election, I will work to ensure these items and the many questions that were raised here tonight. And please, please vote April 7th. Thank you.
I guess first of all, I want to thank everyone tonight for this opportunity to be here. I hope that you have a better understanding after tonight about the candidates and our desires for Chanute. I myself am willing to serve another term as a city commissioner. If I'm what you want as a commissioner and if you've liked what I've done in the past four years, I'd ask for your vote and for your support. Thank you.
I want to thank all of the candidates for participating tonight. We appreciate your time and commitment. We also appreciate the assistance of the city of Chanute and Chanute TV5. They were the ones who made this evening possible for those of you watching at home. Thank you to the citizens who took time to submit questions. And if you didn't get a copy of the local candidate guide, please pick it up on your way out. The chamber and the Chanute Tribune collaborated on this guide to provide information for this. The guides are free and copies are available at the chamber office or at the Chanute Tribune as well. Tonight's forum will be rebroadcast on channels four and five and on the Chanute TV5 website. The chamber is pleased to, to be able to present programs such as this forum to help inform our community. We believe strongly that all citizens should exercise their right to vote. The general election is held Tuesday, April 7th. We encourage you to take time to vote that day. Thank you for being here tonight and thank you for watching at home. Have a great evening.